Being the first Tuesday of the month. Welcome to the City of David City Virtual Planning Commission of April twenty twenty one. The current virtual planning commission meeting format has been undertaken by the city of David City in response to the COVID nineteen pandemic. The planning commission thanks the public for its participation in the virtual meeting format. It is our intention, mission receive any and all comments that you may wish to make for the land use being considered tonight. And we are, the commission is ready to receive all comments that you may wish for us. If you would like to comment, please register to do so at the website address being given by the planning department. Thank you. Okay. May I call on Belba for the let's to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag
Flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic
For which it stands
One nation under God indivisible, indivisible
and just as for all.
Thank you very much. And Roque, please.
Uh, Crum?
Present.
Pacheco?
Here.
Roano?
Here.
Villanueva?
Here.
Satori?
Present. Okay. Minutes to approval of the April sixth virtual planning commission meeting. Any motion?
I'd like to make a motion to accept.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the the minutes of the previous meeting, April sixth, twenty twenty one of the planning commission. All those in favor say aye.
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 I think it's created. So it's adopted. Okay. Tonight we have a how many? The general plan coastal development plan and coastal development premise. We have three areas of concern to talk about tonight. So we are going to have a presentation by Michael regarding the general plan consistent binding for the fiscal year twenty twenty two capital improvement program. This is about the general practice is providing for the fiscal year. Okay, go ahead, Michael.
Thank you, Commissioner Satori. Can everybody see my screen?
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Very clear.
Well, it's just your files.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not your
Oh, that's interesting. Still just the files?
Yeah.
Yeah. Your computer screen.
Um, I believe Michael, you, Mikey, you're gonna have to stop sharing screen, open up the presentation and then share that screen with the presentation.
Okay. Now is the presentation up?
But yes.
Okay. Can't use the folder thing. Okay. This is a request by the Public Works Department that the planning commission find the city's capital improvement program consistent with the general plan. I am going to introduce Sibeli Kaya. She's going to not give a presentation, but answer any questions that the planning commissioners may have. She has prepared some slides that have the prepared proposed projects. Sibeli, did you actually want to go through each one of these or just have the planning commissioners ask questions if they wanted to?
Sorry. Okay, here we go. I can go through the projects and if you like, stop sharing the screen. I'll go ahead and start sharing and then that way I have control of the presentation if that's okay with you.
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Sibeli Kaya. I'm the Senior Management Analyst in the Public Works Department. And tonight, what we have in front of you, it's a presentation. I'm hoping that everyone is able to see my screen.
Yes.
Yeah.
Perfect. Okay, so what we are bringing to you is the list of capital projects that we will be proposing to to city council. And typically in the past, we have included our capital improvement program budget is for two years, but due to the pandemic that we are currently facing, we are proposing a one-year budget, CAP budget, and that's why you are going to see today just projects for years 2022. So this, the list of projects that I have here, it is the same that you have as an attachment to your staff report that you've been giving in advance. So I'm just gonna go through the list. Please feel free to stop me to ask any questions. And also our Public Works Director, you know, Richard Chu is also on this meeting, so feel free to stop and ask any questions to me or to him. So the first set of projects that I'm gonna go through are the traffic and transportation projects. And as you can see, we have ADA sidewalk improvements. And these are improvements that we are doing in the public right-of-way. And this is so to ensure that we're in compliance with all the ADA requirements. We also have what we call the cooperative project development. And we use this project to fund staff time. When they are, as you know, our staff is consistently reaching out and see what grant opportunities come up. So this is the money that we typically use for staff time and also to do any match that we might need for grants. We have the Mission Street street tape improvement. And this one is pretty much to make lots of improvements on Mission Street. Make sure that we have bike lanes, you know, and certain improvements that have already been identified. The two ROs that you see on the list, these are hopefully to convert the ROs into just standalone light poles for the for street lights. So as you know, you know, there we have been, you know, encountering some problems with the ROs going out. In case you're not familiar, the ROs is a set of lights that we have, street lights, that in a way they function as Christmas lights. That if one light goes out, then the rest of the lights will go out. Well, that's what happens with the ROs, the regular output. That if one street light goes out, then the ones, they're all connected, so the ones in the area tend to go out as well. And as you can imagine, you know, the whole area is dark and, you know, it can present many problems. So the city would, you know, would like to start with the conversion, at least the design of the conversions of the ROs, and those are the two projects that you see listed there. The next one that we have is the Ceramone Street slurry seal. As it says there, it's just, you know, to do this slurry seal on this particular street. And the same would be for the skyline, you know, street slurry seal. For a street resurfacing, we have included here three different years. And that's why you see a list in three different times. But again, you know, just to maintain, you know, the quality that we have on our streets. You know, that's the type of project that we're doing there. Another project that we will, that we would like to work on is the traffic signal improvements. We have been working on this project now for a while and, you know, we have many traffic signals in the city, so our hope is to make sure that we make improvements to every one of those. And what we have, the last one that we have on this list is the Vision Zero improvements. And this would be pretty much the vision zero is to prevent as many injuries and fatalities on our roads. And so we have already a plan that has been approved and adopted by council. So and it has already identified some of the improvements that we need to make on that plan, and that's pretty much the funding that we are requesting for, so we can start working on that right away.
Um, pardon me, through the chair, before we move on to the water part, may I ask a question?
Sure, sure. Go ahead.
Okay. Um, you mentioned for the Mission Street improvements and that, which is great. My concern was when I heard bike lanes and I, and I, and to be honest with you, it's popped up at another meeting and we kind of discussed it. But I'm very concerned at how that would work if it was going to be a shared bike lane or if it was going to remove an entire lane currently. Well, years and years and years ago, it was just one up and one down, and then they added the second one. My concern is, is with the amount of traffic that we have, that if, if the possibility for the improvement with a bike lane would then have us lose a lane. So that's my concern.
Yeah, I think at this time, I think our city engineer Kevin is here as well, and so he's most familiar with that streetscape project. So Kevin, I think you can provide some additional details in regards to the scope.
Yes. Hi, good evening. The Mission Streetscape project itself, the bike improvements over there are going to be more narrowing of lanes and not a dedicated bike lane, so it'll be shared lanes. So it won't remove travel lanes from the street there.
Thank you for answering that, Richard and Kevin. My next question would be, are we talking just Mission Street and then you go into El Camino, you go to San Pedro Road if you're, if you're heading south, and then all of a sudden you don't have a lane? Or are you gonna try to continue that into and, you know, because I was thinking about it, I thought, you know, it's well and good to say, okay, we're gonna have bike lanes. But if we only have it John Daly or we only have it Juniper Sheriff, we only have admission street, and then when you're, you're moseying along and you're trying to get to, let's say, coma, you, you turn it from a bike lane to no bike lane. I'm just curious on how that works and how you plan to do that?
Yeah, Commissioner Perron, thank you for the question. As, as many of you know, we have our pet bike master plan that was reviewed and approved, and we went through a public outreach process. Within that plan, it lays out a bike network throughout the city in terms of north-south travel and east-west travel. So we, we are following the, the bike network plan that was laid out as proposed in the pet bike master plan so that it is consistent, so that it does continue. We don't have one section that just ends, and then there's just, you know, no continuation. So, so that should be taken care of whether it continues on San Pedro or El Camino or diverts around it neighboring street. It is, it's been thought out through that network that was identified in the pet bike master. So Kevin, if you have anything else to add, please do so.
Yeah, and this, this specific project is only looking at the section from, well, to the north where San Jose splits off, heading towards the city limit. And so it is a small section. But yes, it does, it doesn't provide separate bike facilities. It just supports the existing bike network identified in that master plan.
I'd like to say thank you for, for explaining that because I know that concerns are out there in the thought of losing a lane, but shared and adjusting and narrowing, we still, we, it gives, it helps both a bicyclist and a motorist. So thank you very much.
Can I, can I make a follow-up on that? Mrs. Kalyas. I would like to know who is responsible for the development and improvement of Mission Street? Is it the City of Daly City or Caltrans?
And so typically for these types of improvements, the city would be initiating the project. We would be going to Caltrans to request encroachment permits for the work that's, you know, you need that may be within their jurisdiction. Oftentimes, projects involve some city jurisdiction, some Caltrans jurisdiction, sometimes county jurisdiction. And so we work with all agencies to, to make these improvements primarily for the benefit of our residents.
Because a lot of my friends in the Mission Street is complaining that from San Pedro Mission up to the top of the hills, the road of Mission Street, and this is the main street of supposed to be Daly City, it is not properly, I would say, maintained. Just walk, just drive, and they, you, you will bump your car, especially turning right, San Pedro coming from the, the north. Coming from here in School Street going to San Pedro, you will see a lot of, a lot of, I would say, problems there in the city, in the streets. This is the main street, but this is Mission Street. So that's why, I don't know if the city has no money or if it is not your jurisdiction or probably there is some negligence on the park of Caltrans or negligence. I don't know who. That's why we have this public hearing, because we have to be heard also. So I want to know who should be responsible for this.
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Commissioner Satori. So in terms of the maintenance of Mission Street, that is Caltrans responsibility. So if you're talking about like potholes, things like that in terms of the pavement condition or shraping, that's faded, that is Caltrans responsibility and under their jurisdiction to, to maintain.
But do you have any coordinative system wherein you can tell them that this makes improvements in the main street of Mission Street from San Pedro up to, up of the hill and up to the, the border of San Francisco? You just, just drive around and you can see what I'm talking about.
Yes, I, I know exactly what you're talking about, Commissioner Satori. We, we do reach out to, to Caltrans on a regular basis. Sometimes it takes a long time for them to respond. But yes, we do reach out to them. We, we go through different avenues. A lot of it depends on their availability and their priorities. But yes, we do, we do reach out to them on a regular basis in regards to addressing these types of requests.
Okay, also. Okay, go ahead. Somebody wants to ask a question?
Yes, it was me. Pardon me. Through the chair. It's my understanding, okay, so I'm, or I'm trying to understand it. So Mission Street belongs to Caltrans. Is that because Mission Street was a main thoroughfare? Previously, before freeways were done, something like Alamanee and all those roads that Caltrans or the state are in charge of that? And is there any way the City of Daly City, have they ever thought about it or approached the state to take over Mission Street and bring it into the fold of the City of Daly City?
Yeah, there's several segments of the road that is within the state right-of-way. Many of those designations existed, you know, prior to the freeway was a main thoroughfare for the state. Some of those sections have been worked out with, with Caltrans in regards to, which ones remain in their jurisdictions, which ones are city jurisdiction. And so those have been kind of clarified some time ago. In regards to any new request, that's something that can be discussed. However, Sydney does have its own limitations and funding abilities, and so as, as you all know, if we assume additional road right-of-way from other agencies, not only do we take over the responsibility, but also the liability comes along with that. And usually, in order for a road to be transferred to another agency, the pavement section would be, would need to be brought up to, to current standards. So in regards to various sections of Mission or El Camino, we have not approached Caltrans in the, in the, you know, recent time in terms of discussing that. But again, if, if it's, if taking over the road without additional revenue, that is a big concern for the city because we have enough of our current roads that we need to maintain and, and be responsible for, so.
Through the chair and Richard, I was just gonna make a point was when I noticed that there was a missing U-turn kind of sign on Mission Street, and I contacted Caltrans. What I was told at that point was that Caltrans literally had one person. I mean, when we talk Caltrans, we assume Caltrans, you know, large Caltrans, big trucks, many staff. And I was told they had one person, one person doing that. And, and so, for instance, my concern would be, you know, when wind or, or age signs or lights or something is not maintained and our residents could potentially have an accident or, you know, someone's making an illegal U-turn because the no U-turn sign was missing. That's important too. And so if they cannot maintain our road where we use one of our main thoroughfares in the City of Daly City, that's a concern. So that's all I was gonna say was that, you know, it's, it's one thing to say, well, they have this big corporation or big, you know, department that they could take care of us, but literally they have one person. And, and I understand what you're saying. We have enough roads. We're a big city. We understand that. On the other, on the other hand, it's an important road to the city and residents of Daly City and businesses. We have many businesses. That's all. Yeah.
Yep, yeah. Thank you very much for that. And usually if there's urgent issues, we work with our police department. And they also have some good contacts at Caltrans in regards to getting a pretty quick response on, on some issues that are kind of immediate safety issues, and they have been successful in dealing with some of those. But some of the other kind of, you know, less urgent issues that, that, you know, may be a risk in terms of, you know, damaging someone's car as a pothole. Sometimes Caltrans is a little bit slower in responding to those types of requests.
And my new Mr. Chu, those potholes has been there for years and years. Yeah, I'm telling you now, because this is where I pass almost every day. Because my office is in Mission. And I remember when I was still with the state board. I, whenever I I contact somebody there from the Caltrans, because they sit also in the board, they, they act. But now, after five years, I have, I'm no longer there, so I, I could, it should be based of their theory. The local public works should contact them and contact coordinate them and make a photo about what's the problem here in Daly City. This is the main road. Mission is possibly the, the main strip in, in the Daly City. Because some side streets are even better up than Mission Street. Just look around, just drive around. It so happened that we have this hearing today, so I am trying to voice out what's the will of the people here. It's a matter of contacting them, telling them, hey, this is supposedly our main strip. And it is dilapidated road. I can tell you that now. Even the, even the middle road, you can see, you can see, just drive around. Even the even the middle road, you can see, you can see, just drive around. It looks it looks so so ugly, just to be honest.
Through and thank you. And through the chair again, I just a comment. Knowing that I drive this every day is when I am going up East Market and I make a right onto Mission Street, right where Bank America is, people are constantly, if they're heading south, they right at that point, they're making U-turns. And you're coming around the corner and they're making U-turns. And that's quite dangerous as well as the lighting in the evening when it's dark. People are trying to cross the street right at Bank of America crossing, heading west. And the lighting is so dark there that even though they have the right to walk, you sometimes cannot see them there. So you know, if if they're if we're not if I think, you know, it's one thing in the daytime and it's ugly and it's and it's in nighttime, you know, it's dangerous. So again, you know, if we're going to have maintenance or we're going to have any monies towards Mission Street, I think we should, you know, we should push because it, as Mr. Satori says, you know, Mission Street is a main street, a big main street for the city of Daly City and for residents. So thank you.
There any other question from my fellow?
I do. I do. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Callius, could you just tell on the ROs you were talking about? What street was that you were mentioning? I I didn't catch that.
So my understanding is that we have, I believe, is it seven areas, Gary, that we have? So
Actually, we have about fifteen neighborhoods that have RO circuits as their street lighting. And so there throughout a large portion of Daly City mostly on the west side. And again, there's fifteen neighborhoods that have that have these RO circuits. And so the proposal is to slowly try to convert them over from series circuits to parallel circuits so that when one goes out, it doesn't you know, dark out the entire neighborhood as they currently do. Okay, okay, I because I was just wondering where whereabouts and being able to see that was okay. Yeah, thank you. RO two fifty-six, that's the Palisades area. Where that is. And so we have again fifteen areas throughout the city. It's quite a bit. It will take a very long time to to be able to convert them all over. And it'll take a lot of a lot of funding to do that as well.
And I'd like to just say thank you on behalf of some acquaintances I have that live in that area. And I've been told it again, in the dark, it's quite dangerous. When one goes out, they all go out and then you're you're unable, you know, on a dark or stormy stormy night or you know, it's for years and years that they've been, you know, requesting this. So I'd like to say thank you for working on this project.
Any more question, Gary?
No, that's about it. Thank you. I appreciate it.
I have a lot of question in my mind, you know, especially when it comes to budgeting because that is my master's degree is public administration. Fiscal policies, my about forty years ago, I I work in the government. So I I know what I'm but I would not going to ask into this question because this is a lot of, especially when we talk of zero-based budgeting. I will not deal with it. I'll just ask how how much is your total budget for your budgetary proposal for twenty twenty-one, twenty-two for the public works? How much, Ms. Callius?
Yeah, so today I've been working on a different presentation that we're going to be, you know, doing for for council. And if I am not mistaken, I don't know the exact amount. I could get that information for you. But I believe that for year twenty twenty-two, we're asking for about twenty-eight million dollars. Now, this is twenty-eight million dollars and there are different sources of this revenue. So it's not all general fund. And that's important to know. Some of them come from enterprise funds. Some of the funding is coming from grants. Some of the money is coming from, you know, developer fees, you know, developers have contributed. And those monies are also being used for certain projects. But if we look at the overall, I believe it's about twenty-eight million dollars.
How about the previous year? How about how much?
I don't have that information. And as I said, because only because I was preparing.
Because when you talk of the budget, normally this is my forte, that's why. But I'm not going to insist on that. I would like only how much is the 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 increase over the past year? Because I understand the city of this needs more funding for public works here in Daly City. But the way I look at it, it the highest budgeting is in public safety. That is why if we can divert some of those funds from public safety to public works, especially development, improvement of the streets, street lightings, and painting of the pavement, I I would say that will be a good one. That's why we are asking this question, not really to 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 ask for something else, but but if you can probably have more increase for especially for public works for the community. Yeah, so my I I understand out of the budget of hundred thirty thirty million, seventy-five percent goes to public safety and public something like that. So this has to be balanced. I don't want to talk on this, but the point is we touch on this. And that's a problem now, especially now the city is in turmoil, especially in some problem going on. But I I would like to say that if if the public works can can just improve more on on streets, lighting, streets, painting, and especially Mission Street where most of the little businesses stays, you know. Thank you very much. That's my comment. Anybody else would like to do the comment?
No more.
Because anyway, it's a city of city council that will do this. But anyway, thank you very much. Any more, any more presentation or any more information, Ms. Callius?
I actually do. I have other areas. So if we have the time, I would like to continue with some of the other projects.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, so now moving on to the water projects. Now, this is one of those enterprise funds. And but they set it up a projects that they would like to work on. And this is what they're requesting city council for approval. They want to do some main improvements. These are water main improvements in the East Market area. They also would like to pick up a or to buy a pickup truck. And that they have included that in here. There are some improvements that they would like to do. You know, so this are the Tribune plant. So that is why you also see some of that money there. These are pretty much self-explanatory. They want to do some fencing, you know, in in a reservoir. So they would like to, you know, request some money for that. Reservoir aid coating, you know, they would like to do some improvements there. So that's what they're asking for. They also have another big project, which is the water main replacement in the San Diego, Santa Cruz and Guadalupe area. So that's a big project that they're requesting for the upcoming year. Skater system upgrades. Skater system is kind of like a monitoring system that they have. Make sure that everything is working efficiently. Efficiently, you know, at the lift stations and on that all the equipment, you know, it's working. That's what they want to do. Some upgrades to that specific system that they use. And I believe this is a system that it works twenty-four seven. They also contribute to public works. And when we do the street resurfacing, you know, there's some water maintenance improvements that they make at the same time. So this is for some of the resurfacing on our streets that they contribute to. They have a well that they would like, you know, to do some rehabilitation on. So that's where it is. And then there was like electrical upgrade. You know, the another project that is, I believe this is at a lift station that they would like to operate some of the electrical work there. Moving on, here is another enterprise fund, and this is the sanitation area. This is the so I was talking about the water. This one is the sewer portion of that department. And these are the projects that they're requesting. The digestive gas scrubbing system they want to work on. They also want to do some improvements in the operate operations room that they have. And this is at the treatment plant. They want to do some improvements in the roof specifically for that area. And that's what this is for. Plant aeration mixer upgrade, plant electrical instrumentation upgrades. Again, this is upgrades that they want to do to their systems. They want to also improve some of the processes they have at the plants. But they also want to do some extra structural improvements as well at the Tribune plant. And that's what those two projects are for. And then we also have their rehabilitation of the twenty-seven inch final effluent force main. Again, sanitation also contributes with a skater system upgrade. So they would be putting their share from sanitation. There is also the secondary clarifier three coating. So as you can see, some of these are improvements that they're trying to do. Sewer lift station rehab and replacement. Sewer main, we have any improvements. And then also they want to do some system improvements that is based on some recommendations that have been in the master plan, the sanitary master plan that they have. So these are based on the recommendations that they have from that specific plant. They want to spend this amount of money on making improvements to their system. A street resurfacing as well, just as water does with, you know, works with the public works on that. So the sewer, so they're putting, you know, aside some money for that or they're requesting that. Then at the Tribune plant, some of the air scrubbers that they need to work on. They want to also upgrade some of the vehicles that they have. And the last two projects that you see there are, the first one is the fence replacement that they would like to do at the wastewater treatment plant. And then also they would like to update their master plan so that the last project is specifically for that to hire consultants so that they can work on the wastewater treatment plan, master plan. Any questions for what from water or sewer projects?
Ms. Callius, I would like to say that the wastewater treatment plan of Daly City is, I would say, one of the model I can consider one of the best here in Daly City. It is really, to be honest with you, it can be a model. Because I understand that some people looks at your place, this wet water treatment as a good model. In fact, they say that the water being treated there, you can drink it. To me, it's fantastic. So again, that's why we are asking, I'm just asking how much the budget. So probably we can increase it, probably. Depending on the city council's perception. Because I think the city council is more focused on public safety. But to me, it is, it should be a balanced budget. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Okay, I'm gonna move forward now. And then here is what we call the General ZAP. And these are projects that are funded with, you know, just, you know, revenues are coming into the city. The first project that you see here is to do some upgrades to our facilities to ensure that we're in compliance with any ADA requirements. So that's a big project that we have listed there. And we also at the Civic Center North, which is the building across the street from City Hall, we would also like to do some tenant improvements. There's been some conversations about moving, you know, a department into that into that building. So the money would be spent to make sure that we make all the necessary improvements before the move takes place. Civic Center South Roof Replacement Project, that is the building behind us at City Hall. And this project would be for replacing the roof for that building. The next few projects that you see here on my list, these are have to do with the fire department. The first one would be to install a break room for them. And I believe this is in the admin building, fire admin building. We also, they're talking about also doing a possible relocation. And that would be the portion that the city would be, you know, putting in to, you know, to ensure a smooth transition if they were to relocate. Fire Station ninety-four needs to have the roof replaced. So that's the project. And then at the Station ninety-four, there are two projects that we have here. One is the HVAC upgrade. And the other one would be to upgrade the sleeping quarters. So those two would be specifically for ninety-four. And then a Station ninety-five, you know, we would have to replace the tanks, the above-ground diesel fuel storage and dispensing dispensing tanks. So that money set aside would be for that specific project. Then Lake Merced Boulevard, a storm drain line cleaning, that is also needed. This it's a storm drain, is not a sewer, is not a water line. This is a storm drain line that needs to be cleaned. Then we also would like to do some parking lot improvements. And you know, this is at some of the cities' facilities. This could be at a parks, could be at City Hall. I don't have this specific on this particular project, but I know that, you know, we have worked on making improvements on some of the parking lots. And this is for facilities that are owned by the city. Ceremonial Library, there are three big projects that we would like to do. One would be to make some ADA upgrades. We had a an ADA evaluation and some recommendations have come about to make more ADA improvements. And that not only at this location, but many other locations. Obviously, we cannot work on all of them. So we are taking it one step at a time. And for now, we would like to work at the ceremonial library to make, you know, to to do those upgrades. And also it would be for an elevator. That would be another part of the ceremonial library. And the last one that you see here would be the HVAC system and also the roof replacement there as well. I see another one here for Station ninety-four. And this is a project that just came about with where they would like to purchase like a metal container that it would be used for some of the training exercises that are firefighters do.
Can you ask some question, madam?
Yes, go ahead.
You speak about Civic Center, fire station, parking lot, ceremonial. We we know very well that it needs improvement, especially in our infrastructure, because they have been there for so long. And it needs really to agree with. Did you consider, either Mr. Two or you can answer this. Did you consider putting up soft hole the solar solar panel, especially in the rooftop? So more or less, we can say a little bit of especially energy. Because I understand this is will be the future, especially the support of solar solar panel. Somebody can answer this.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Chair. So yes, that has been discussed amongst other energy-saving measures in regards to changing our lightings to LED lighting, upgrading some of our HVAC systems to to more efficient systems. So all of those things are being discussed. Solar is also being discussed along with EV electric vehicle charging stations for vehicles. Those are all being discussed. The challenge is having enough resources to to be able to implement these these other types of projects. Most of what you see that Sabelli has presented so far is just kind of maintaining and and addressing deferred maintenance on a lot of our facilities. But even with that, we are talking with city manager's office in regards to funding for some of these other projects like solar, like electric vehicle charging station. So so yes, thank you very much for 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 those questions.
Because I understand that the federal government is giving grant to especially solar. So if somebody So if uh, somebody in the city can, City Manager's Office can, can work on that. If they're fast enough to, to really put research on that, then you can avail of that. Because we're think, we're talking here not only the current situation, but the future situation wherein we can have a very efficient and and the energy is there, we can harness it.
Correct.
Only for today or current situation that we are working. We should be thinking also for the next, next generation or future that will take on the city. Thank you.
Yes, uh, appreciate the comments very much.
Yeah. Go ahead, Ms. Callius.
Thank you so much. Um, and the last project that you see on this list, um, it's for uh, some remodeling that we would like to do on the Training Center, and this would be at Fire Station ninety four. Uh, moving on, these are some projects that we have listed here, and this is specifically funded with uh, grants. Uh, now, the portion that you see here uh, might not necessarily be the total cost of the project. But we wanted to identify that these projects um, are also being funded. Perhaps not only with city funds, but also with some grants that our staff has worked on and that they've, um, you know, they've been able to secure. So one of the projects is for a traffic signal installation at Coronada, uh, you know, one uh, south. Uh, this is on State Road one, on and off ramp. Um, we also um, are talking about making some improvements at the Margate uh, Parks. Uh, at the Margate Park and um, you know, this is a, uh, we're also looking into, um, you know, uh, we have been asked for, we have been, we have asked for additional funds. So hopefully, you know, uh, we can get more grants and that way we don't have to, you know, um, come out of the city funds to, to, to make the improvements that we would like at this particular park. This park was actually um, identified in our Parks Master Plan, uh, you know, the, with all the um, the possibilities, you know, um, of what we could do at this park. So we're, um, you know, we're, we're really, uh, you know, trying to pursue and, and get this project going. Um, and then the last project that you see here with grants is will be for the Ceremony, uh, State Route one, on and off ramp. Uh, another traffic installation um, that we would like to do there. Now, the solid waste uh, franchise fee, this would be, um, projects are funded um, with um, revenues are coming in for, uh, you know, with our agreement that we have with Republic, um, you know, for garbage rates. Um, part of that is coming, uh, part of the rates that are being collected is coming to um, make improvements in the Muscle Rock area. And as you can see, solid waste uh, franchise fee um, is um, basically the main uh, i- if not the only source of um, funding for this particular project. Uh, we need to do some, you know, um, maintenance and, and uh, pipe repairs and replacements uh, at the landfill that, that we have there. Um, there's also the gabion wall that needs either to be repaired or replaced. Um, we have a seawall as well that needs uh, some repairs and, and replacement. And some of the mains that also involves, um, you know, um, there at the landfill or what used to be a landfill. Um, and then there is so- some routine monitoring that, that we also do. And there's some reporting that we also do, and uh, these projects uh, would pretty much take care of all that. Now, what we have here, these are developer fees. Developer fees are, or these projects are, are funded with developer fees. And these are contributions that we get from developers. Um, you know, there, this is, um, you know, funding uh, that is coming in, and we can only, the, the, the monies or the revenues are coming in, we can only spend it on certain projects. These are restricted funds. So we have identified these projects that we would like to do. Um, there's different areas in regards to the developer fees, but these are the projects that we have um, um, identified and that we would like to pursue for next year. One of them is the six hundred block Street Francis, and this, I believe this is a water main uh, project that, that needs to happen at the six hundred block of Saint Francis. We also have a traffic signal installation that we would like to do at the Calanis Ceremonie uh, Center driveway. Um, there is also a, an emergency uh, vehicle preemption. Um, the storm drain master plan, currently the city does not have one, so we would like to work on that. Um, you know, to identify some of the areas that perhaps, you know, need some improvements. And uh, some different, you know, processes that we can uh, put in place. There's also a traffic signal interconnect installation that we would like to do. And the last one that you see there would be the Westlake Park uh, Sports uh, Court renovation. Um, so again, this would be to work on some of the uh, courts that we have at the Westlake Park. And that's my presentation for tonight. If anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
A- any question from my colleague, Rick, Teresa or Gary?
No.
No.
No. Thank you so much. Thank you for a good presentation.
Yeah, I, I think it's, to me, it's a very enlightening and educational for me, because uh, at least uh, being the alter ego of the city council, we, we can recommend something that is, I would say, very laudable. So, anybody who wants to close this public hearing?
So moved.
Some, uh, second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that, uh, we close this public hearing, so all those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carried and uh, motion to recommend the approval of the General Plan Consistent Finding for fiscal year twenty twenty two capital improvement program, subject to the condition outlined in this staff report of May four. Any motion?
I'd like to make a motion to accept.
I second.
Been uh, moved and seconded that uh, we approve this, call roll call please. Roll call.
Ron?
Aye.
Pacheco?
Aye.
Roano?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Satori?
Approved convincingly. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, okay, thank you. And uh, now we go on, item number two. To be uh, presented by Michael. Hostile development permit, use permit, uh, for this twenty one. One four nine eight nine. Reconstruction of an existing gabion wall, widening of the existing access road below the gabion wall. And relocation of an existing, or done, wood, storm drain pipe. Excavation of materials from an existing silting basin are also proposed, as well as general storm water system maintenance on the site. Go ahead, the Mr. Michael.
Can everybody see my screen?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, some of the planning commissioners may remember an item like this several years ago. Essentially, uh, this is a proposal by the City of Daly City to complete maintenance repair work at the Muscle Rock landfill. As some of you may know, uh, that Muscle Rock area is a closed landfill site. The City of Daly City has maintained the site in its closed nature since nineteen seventy seven, I believe is the year. And whenever the city wants to complete maintenance work there, it requires a coastal development permit um, through the Planning Commission and City Council and the Coastal Commission itself sometimes. So, uh, that's what this item is. Uh, most of you are probably familiar with where Muscle Rock is, but it's located essentially uh, at the end of Westline Drive on the coast, west of Highway thirty five and most of the uh, existing neighborhoods there. So there are five items that are proposed for improvements at this time in, in, uh, that, we call it the twenty nineteen maintenance uh, schedule. Reconstruction of an existing gabion wall, widening of an existing access road below the gabion wall. Relocation of existing storm drain pipe. Excavation of materials from the existing silting basin and general stormwater system maintenance on the site. So basically consists of five items. Here's a site plan that shows where uh, the gabion wall um, repair would work. Or re- repair work would occur, it's essentially in this area. This is where you come into the site. Um, and so this is the, it's an attachment to the Planning Commission staff report that shows the areas of the landfill and where the proposed work would be. Uh, much more clearly, um, we've got some photographs to show um, the gabion repair uh, where the gabion repair work would occur, and these are some photos of that.
Is that called Gabion?
Gabion, yes.
Well, I see, I see. I, I was thinking Luis Gabion.
Yeah, I'm not sure if I'm actually pronouncing it right. I say gabion.
Yeah, that, okay.
And here's, here's the wall looking northward.
It's good, eh?
Mm-hmm, and there, the maintenance would occur to this area as well as to the road to the left. Some more site maintenance would occur in uh, these uh, drainage conduit that exists in the site. I think this is just illustrating there's a lot of vegetative cover that needs to be cleared in some of the areas and to allow for better drainage. The resource protection element or portion of the city zoning ordinance, it requires that uh, certain findings be made in consisting with, consisting with the coastal development program. Um, I won't read each one of these, but uh, essentially, none of the proposed projects aspects would impede public access to the site. That's probably the biggest uh, responsibility of the Planning Commission and City Council to make that finding, that there's no, you know, adverse effect on public access to the coast. Proposals exempt from CEQA. Staff recommends the Planning Commission forward to the City Council a recommendation of an approval of the coastal development permit. If there's any questions, the Public Works Department, as you know, is also present to answer those. City engineers specifically can answer any questions the planning commissioners have, as well as uh, planning staff can assist with that.
Are there any questions, uh, my fellow commissioners?
No, not on my end.
No, not here.
Okay, so do we, state them, do we have any uh, letters from the public? Any comment from the public?
We don't have any comments, and we don't have anybody lined up to speak.
Okay. Probably because they believe in you, not on that. Anything else, uh, before, otherwise, uh, we have to close this. If, I don't have any comment.
Neither do I, so.
Rick?
No.
Good.
All good.
Uh, any motion to close the public hearing?
I'd like to make a mo-
Sorry.
No worries.
Moved and seconded that we close this public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, motion carried. Uh, motion to adopt the findings as outlined in this staff report to May four. Any motion? To adopt?
I'm, I move.
Second.
You move a second there that we adopt the findings as outlined, hearing report to May four. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carried. Uh, motion to obtain the environmental assessment. Motion.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, so, okay. Second.
From the environmental assessment. Motion carried. Um, any motion to recommend approval of the coastal development permits? Use permit, U P R dash four, dash twenty one, dash one four nine eight nine. Subject to the condition outlined in this staff report to May four.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded.
Call call please.
Aye.
Pacheco?
Aye.
Roano?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Satori?
Yes. So, when is this going to the city?
It'll go to the City Council on May twenty four.
Okay. Okay, item number three. To be presented by engineer Brian Pallan. Hostile development permit, use permit, U P R dash seven, dash nineteen, dash one four one four eight. And decided view, D R seven, dash nineteen, one four one or nine, installation of new seventy foot mono- monopane cell tower associated with with fence enclosure. You can go ahead, make the presentation, Mr. Pallan.
Uh, through the chair, m- Mr. Pallan's not present. Uh, this item is actually recommended for a um, not a continuance, but that the Planning Commission tabled the item. The city did uh, provide public notice to hold a hearing on this and, uh, subsequent to that. And there was a small issue that needed to be resolved, uh, before we could actually hold a public hearing on it. So, um, we did have a member of the public contact us about the topic, and we did tell them that, uh, we were recommending a tabling of the item. So that is our recommendation tonight. So it's not to a date certain, it's tabling, and we will conduct a new public notice at the time um, that the item is up for discussion, uh, if, if it comes up for discussion again.
Okay, okay. So, uh, just for the information of the public, uh, we're have to table this item number three. And you know, the procedure sometimes, so they use it over some, but that is how the procedure goes. So, with this, uh, are there any more question or any topic that you would like to discuss? My fellow commissioners?
No.
Oh, yeah. Any, uh, what's this appointment, or the, any topic of, uh, what's this?
Do we have to do a motion?
Motion. Anything else, uh, would like to make a report? Hearing none, so uh, the, any motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
I second.
Been moved a second there that we, uh, adjourn the meeting until next time. Thank you very much and
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good night, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you.
Night. Bye bye.
Bye.